Good morning, I will get started in a moment. First, if we can please elevate the court reporter to panelist. Guess it's not morning, good afternoon, we'll get started in a moment. And I'll look to our court reporter, are you ready for us to go on the record?
Uh, yes ma'am, sure am.
Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and get started with introductions and then we will move forward from there. Uh, good afternoon, it is approximately 1 o'clock on May 1st, 2025. I'm Nicole Kinsey, presiding hearing officer for the administrative hearings office of the state water resources control board. This is the hearing on the pending petitions for change of water rate permits 16478, 16479, 16481, and 16482 of the Department of Water Resources for the proposed Delta Conveyance Project. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the July 31st notice of public hearing and subsequent amendments. And the hearing is being conducted by Zoom webinar. Uh, if you are planning on actively participating today, you will need to log into the Zoom using the individual link that was sent to you by Zoom. Uh, if you are having any trouble communicating with us or logging in today, please send an email to D C P dash W R dash petition at waterboards.ca.gov. This hearing is being broadcast live on the AHO YouTube channel. Uh, both the audio and video are being recorded and we will post files of this recording in the FTP folder for this proceeding. The YouTube recording will also be available on the AHO YouTube webpage. We'll see how this afternoon goes, but if necessary, we will take, uh, take a break. Uh, I surely hope we will not go until 5:00 PM, but if we do, we will have a hard stop at 5:00 PM. This is, I will take appearances as we have in the past, as each of you, um, would like to speak, we will go ahead and elevate you to panelist and, uh, allow you to introduce yourself and then you may go ahead and speak. I think what we'll do today, given that I anticipate this will be a bit of a discussion, is that we will go ahead and elevate you. And once you're a panelist, you will remain a panelist and that way you will have control of your video, your audio and video. Um, the agenda for today is to address solely procedural issues, we will not be hearing, uh, testimony today. We have gathered to address the question of moving forward. I'll generally, just generally summarize it, the question of moving forward with this proceeding uh, in relation to the allegation of a conflict of interest between DWR and Somac Simmons and Dunn, which represents some of the protestants to this proceeding. I did request briefing, um, or invite briefing, I should say, and I received, uh, several briefs which are saved on the AHO FTP, uh, site as of the deadline on Wednesday morning, and I wanted to thank all of you for those briefing documents. I did read them carefully, I found them to be very helpful, uh, and helpful in thinking through what issues we really need to address today and what remains on the table. Um, once we get through these procedural issues and we can address anything else that may come up, but then we would, the intent would be to break for today and reconvene, if appropriate, reconvene tomorrow morning, uh, with, um, the evidentiary portion of the proceeding. My intent today would be to go ahead and summarize where I am, we may call this sort of a tentative, um, statement of my position based on the briefing and based on our conversations last week. With that in front of you, I think I would just proceed through those of you who filed, uh, briefs with request, with respect to this issue, I would start with DWR and Ms. Carroll, um, moved to the Somac firm and their representation, and then moved through the others who filed briefs, and then anyone else who would like to comment on the issue. I think that's an orderly way to go forward. Um, I would expect today maybe less of a discussion format, I do enjoy a good back and forth that we've had. And I, you know, if, if necessary, you will get a chance to respond, but I think you should take your opportunity to speak as a, potentially a, a one-time opportunity. So please do, you know, in response to my, the summary of where I am, take the opportunity to say what you have to say. And then at the close of today, we, we, I'll, uh, hopefully make a ruling from the bench, which then would be formalized in writing, if that's appropriate. But I want to hear what all of you have to say first. So that is my intent. Before I go ahead and lay out where I am, are there any, um, questions or concerns I should raise first? Oh, I did want to mention, it came up last week. This time on this issue is not being computed as part of your time. Um, and we can get into more details if you need more clarity on that, but we're not including it in the time tracker spreadsheet. It's not part of your, your, your chess clock, so to speak. Uh, this was, uh, at least to me unforeseen, and I think a bonus for us all in terms of dealing with it. So I did want to clarify that issue. All right, I'm going, going to go ahead and summarize where I am and thinking through these issues. Again, the briefing I found to be quite helpful and I appreciate the time that was spent. On that, I also appreciate, I know I set page limits, but I also appreciate the brevity that was, that was helpful as well. Um, in orienting myself with this proceeding, what is, was come forward with this issue? And now that I've had more time to reflect on it, is that there is no motion or request for relief in, in front of me. Uh, there is nothing pending and several of you emphasize that in your brief, and there's nothing for me to act on. To the extent DWR had initially requested a delay of cross-examination based on the alleged conflict, that request has been withdrawn, as I understand it. And so there is nothing here for me to be acting upon. That said, I do want to clarify that I also find there is no residual objection or, um, remaining element of DWR's, uh, request for delay that is still pending out there. We have, you know, we have incoate water rights at issue in this proceeding. I don't think we can have an incoate objection, if you would describe it that way, that any such objection, to the extent there was one, or if that's the right word for it. Um, but any such objection has been extinguished by the withdrawal of DWR of any request for a remedy. There's no request before me for a remedy, therefore I don't see any outstanding objection. Um, I, I don't think there can be an objection that's divorced from a request to, uh, for the tribunal to do anything. Um. I think if DWR, in thinking about this, if DWR seeks to retain some right to, uh, request relief in the future and retain that type of right, the time to make a motion to preserve that right is now. Uh, I, I will deem any such right to be waived if we go forward with the hearing. And DWR has filed no such motion, and that motion could take several different forms. I real, there's still the outstanding question of whether or not the administrative hearings office or the board has jurisdiction over a motion to disqualify an attorney. But in the least, DWR would need to make a marker and file a motion for, for example, time to seek a remedy in another forum that may have jurisdiction over the issue. But given that there is no pending motion, an absent, a request from DWR to file such a motion, whether it's with the AHO or with another tribunal, and we move forward tomorrow, I would deem, um, the opportunity to seek such a remedy to have been waived. Um, and that effectively DWR will have consented to the participation of the Somac firm in this proceeding. Uh, but emphasize in this proceeding, right? But this is limited to, my understanding of this waiver here, by an election not to file a motion and seek a remedy, is that it would not prevent DWR from challenging Somac's participation in other proceedings, uh, if that would be appropriate, whether that other proceeding is in a court of law or, uh, before an administrative agency. However, DWR, as I understand, will have waived any right to seek to challenge Somac's participation in this hearing or raise any objection to elevate, to evidence developed in this hearing or challenge any board order arising out of this hearing that is based on an alleged conflict with the Somac firm. Uh, if DWR has a different understanding, please clarify that now. I want to put this on the table, um, so that we can put this to rest, at least with respect to this proceeding. I also wanted to add to this, that based on my review of the legal arguments in the briefing, I, I don't understand, uh, it is my understanding, under the law, that no other party in this, um, proceeding would have standing to file a motion or raise an objection based on the alleged conflict between DWR and the Somac firm. Um, but in addition, regardless of, um, whether there would be standing, such a request for relief will have been waived if, if a motion is not filed now or a request to file a motion is not made now, um, and before we proceed with this hearing potentially tomorrow. So that is where I'm at, I'm sure there are matters of clarity. My intent would be, well, let's talk through it, uh, that may refine my thinking here, and I wanted to give you a chance. But that is my reaction to the briefing, that essentially there is no motion outstanding for me to act upon. Um, the DWR's election not to file such a motion now at this time is essentially a waiver of any right to do so in the future. And that waiver would include any right to make an objection about Somac's participation in this proceeding, whether that objection is made or motion is made here before the AHO or in another venue. But that waiver does not affect DWR's, um, right to raise uh, objections, motions, et cetera, with respect to the firm, Somac firm's participation in some other proceeding, that is not this hearing on the, uh, petition for change with respect to these water rights. So with all of that said, I think we will start with DWR, if you have any response to these statements. I know this is on the fly. Um, if we could please elevate Ms. Carroll. And if there's anyone else from DWR who would like to speak and be elevated, please also raise your hand. And Ms. Carroll, you're welcome to come on camera and introduce yourself and, uh, say what, anything you would like to say.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Hearing Officer Kinsey, this is Anne Carroll appearing for the Department of Water Resources. Um, I did want to let you know that today, uh, Ms. Morris and I are sharing a microphone, but we will both appear on camera if we're speaking.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, thank you for letting us know where you're at after the briefing, it's greatly appreciated. Um, just not to beat a dead horse, but to make absolutely sure we are reserving our rights to bring this issue and seek remedy in other forums. But as to this proceeding, this CPOD hearing, we will not be able to raise any objection, file a motion, and the hearing will proceed, um, and without this issue.
And I want to, can I follow up on that, just, and I, and I realize you framed it with beating a dead horse, but I'm gonna go, and I, I, I love, I have a horse, I love horses. So let's not do that. But I'm going to do the same thing, which is just to clarify. DWR is not seeking to retain its rights to seek disqualification of the Somac firm in this proceeding, but in another forum. That is not the-
That is correct.
Okay.
We are not seeking it here, we will be seeking it in another forum.
Let me clarify that again, because now I'm- For example, let, maybe let's get it right, for example, I'm, I'm not sure what the, the cause of action would be. DWR going to a court of law and seeking an order from the court that would state, for example, the Somac firm is disqualified from representing any protestants in any proceeding involving the tunnels, the Delta Conveyance Project.
It would not apply to this proceeding. This one would be exempt from that. Yes, correct.
Thank you, I just wanted to try to make that as painfully, hopefully that's painfully clear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else you would like to say at this time?
I just wanted to say that we didn't bring this up in this forum for gamesmanship. It only prejudices DWR and would result in delay because we have to deal with the issue. This was really an issue of duty to former clients and upholding the legal ethics that attorneys need to abide by. Um, so we really appreciate that you're efficiently handling this issue and that we can focus on the Delta Conveyance Project water rights and move forward here. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. I will next look to, I see we have Mr. Ferguson, and do we have any other representatives from, uh, either from Somac Simmons and Dunn or, or representing Somac Simmons and Dunn? If you would, please raise your hand and we will elevate you. I see we have, uh, we would please elevate James Banks. And you should get a message, I know this, this is your first time in this particular forum, you should get a message that asking you, thank you, good. And you're welcome to come on camera and introduce yourself. Good afternoon, Mr. Banks, welcome to the State Water Resources Control Board Administrative Hearings Office.
Thank you, uh, uh, Presiding Officer Kinsey, it's very nice to make your acquaintance. And I am James Banks and I'm appearing on behalf of Somac Simmons and Dunn and will address, uh, at least the issues that are before us today on behalf of the firm.
Thank you, and please, if, now is the time, if you would like to respond to anything that has been said so far.
Uh, my response is, uh, we completely agree. Um, I think that, uh, thank you for your analysis, it's very detailed, it is spot on. Um, we do believe that you correctly analyzed the issues. Um, we obviously have a very sharp dispute with our colleagues at the Department of Water Resources as to the existence of a conflict, but that dispute needs to be aired, and it sounds like it will be in the appropriate, uh, court. Um, and so if and when it is raised, we will address it and, um, uh, it will, uh, be resolved in the manner in which it's resolved. So I really don't have any substantive comments to your tentative rulings, um, uh, today, because they're certainly in accord with our briefing on the subject, uh, the various subjects that were raised. I would like to reserve, um, the opportunity to respond to anything that the other parties may have to say, uh, to the extent that, um, a response from me might be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Banks, I appreciate it. With that, I would like to turn to the state water contractors who did also file a brief. Uh, thank you, Mr. Krieger, if we can please elevate Mr. Krieger. Good afternoon, Mr. Krieger.
Good afternoon, Hearing Officer Kinsey, Miles Krieger for the state water contractors. Uh, state water contractors have no objection to, uh, your proposed approach, and so I have nothing further to add.
Thank you. I appreciate your brevity. If we can please, next, we will, let's see, I have North Delta Water Agency. Do we have, I believe, Mr. Cho, yes, if we can please elevate Mr. Cho. Good afternoon, Mr. Cho.
Good afternoon, Hearing Officer Kinsey. Um, I guess I have no real substantive comments to make aside from what has already been made in our written brief. Um, I, I do have just one clarifying question that I'm wondering if DWR could answer with response, uh, with regard to the way that the, um, the waiver and the objection is, is framed currently and how, what DWR would actually be pursuing in a different forum. Would the objection still arise from Somac's representation of its clients in this proceeding?
And Ms. Carroll, you're welcome to respond directly. I think, I think this is our same issue, but it, it merits clarity, so thank you.
Yes, it was, it would stem from the conflict issue we've raised here, but it will not affect this proceeding.
Okay, and, and one more clarification point, um, I'm looking at the, the transcript from April 24th. And if I could just read this line that Ms. Carroll said, uh, and let's be clear, we're not dropping the objection. Is that, does that mean that there is still an objection that is standing that the hearing officer needs to rule on, or has that changed?
It's not an objection, we're reserving our rights to pursue the conflict issue in other forums and any associated remedies. So it's mine, Miss speaking, as to calling it an objection, or it's a reservation of right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cho. I see your hand, Mr. Keeling, but I'm inclined to, I think I said I'd go through the brief, the parties who filed briefs first, but certainly I would get to you if that, if that worked, okay, the hand is down, if, if that's, we, you certainly will have the opportunity. Uh, let me go next to, um, Eldorado Irrigation District and Placer County Water Agency. Do we have Mr. Donlin, or, yes, we do have Mr. Donlin, please elevate Mr. Don. Good afternoon, Mr. Donlin, you're welcome to come on camera and off mute.
Uh, good afternoon, Ms. Kinsey, um, thank you for, for hearing us this afternoon. Like you, I think I understand what is on the table. Um, although, uh, every, every time there's even a bit of dialogue about the scope of the reservation of rights that DWR is making, I, I get confused again. So, um, as to the, the confirmation that Ms. Carroll just made, Mr. Cho, um, I think where we're at is, um, uh, DWR has, um, reserved its objection to Somac Simmons and Dunn, um, appearing in this proceeding. Um, um, that it will not pursue remedies, um, to, um, disqualify Somac Simmons and Dunn from this proceeding. Um, when we get to pursuing remedies in other forums, there, I believe, is still some ambiguity about whether we're talking about other forums for other proceedings or pursuing, um, disqualification or other remedies relative to the Somac firm's participation in this proceeding. And if it's the latter, I think we still have some confusion about whether the sanctity of the record that's developed in this proceeding will be preserved with the, um, conditional waiver, um, that, that the department is making here. I don't know if I can ask the question, uh, and stating my understanding, but, um, perhaps you can help me formulate, um, that, that question, because I think it's consistent with what you were asking.
And let me, let me give this, uh, tried this way, and thank you, Mr. Donlin, for this, like, as I said, this is worthy of making sure we have a meeting of the minds to the extent possible and clarity. I will make an attempt, and then Ms. Carroll, you can correct me if I'm wrong, or, or, uh, refine what I say. That is my understanding. My understanding is the, that DWR does not believe it has an outstanding objection. Um, and I also stated, from my perspective, that there can be no such objection, it has been extinguished by the withdrawal or the lack of any request for a remedy. But that DWR is trying to articulate very clearly that it is reserving its right to seek a remedy with respect to the conflict of interest issue with respect to Somac's participation in other proceedings, not this hearing, but other proceedings, uh, and that is the, the basis of the reservation, and I see that as something that's outside of the scope of, outside of my lane, if you will, that's outside of the scope. What I had said, and I believe I heard, um, confirmation from DWR, but let's, I will say it again, and so we'll make sure. That is my understanding that DWR will have waived any right to seek to challenge Somac's participation in this hearing or raise any objection to evidence developed in this hearing or challenge any board order arising out of this hearing. And that is true, whether it's, uh, the attempt to, the waiver would apply not only to the administrative hearings office, but it would also apply in any court of law. That's my understanding, and with that, I will turn things over to you, Ms. Carroll, do you have any refinement to that?
I believe I do have a small refinement to that, in that we would still be able to object to the evidence otherwise in other forums, so whatever is raised here, we could still appropriately object in a way that is not related to the conflict that we are not pursuing here in this hearing proceeding. Does that make sense?
I, I believe so, so if there's an objection to evidence that was developed in this proceeding, that the objection is unrelated to this conflict of interest, it's based on some other alleged procedural flaw, or I don't know what, that, that could still be raised in another forum. That seems understood, thank you. With that, Mr. Donlin, back to you, are there, is there a follow-up to that?
That, that's very helpful, um, I appreciate that clarification, Ms. Kinsey and Ms. Carroll, thank you.
Thank you. I will proceed, next on my list is, um, DT EC, do I have a representative from DT EC who would like to appear? Mr. Buscher, if we can please elevate Mr. Buscher, who does not represent DT EC but is associated, so please. I think associated, and I probably are on the brief too, I actually didn't look at the signature line, you can clarify that for us. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Ms. Kinsey, uh, you've got all that correct, Eric Buscher, San Francisco Bay Keeper. Um, I'm here to speak for the group in our brief, but do not represent the, the DT folks. So I appreciate the repetitive clarification of this, because I think it's important. And I take the status to be that DWR intends to seek whatever remedies it may have in some other forum, based on Somac's participation here, but will not seek any remedies here. And I think despite the kind of oddity of that situation, as long as we have accomplished that this issue does not come back up in this proceeding in any way, and this issue does not come back up with respect to this record in any way, then I, I think that is consistent with what we had, um, advocated in the written proceedings. Um, and I, I, one other clarify, point of clarification, I think, Hearing Officer, you're correct, that no party here would have standing, other than DWR, would have standing to move to disqualify the Somac firm. I think parties do have standing to, um, raise issues with respect to the adequacy of the waiver or the consequence of moving forward, based on the integrity of the record in this process. And so as long as we can accomplish those two goals, to make sure that this issue is done in this process and with this record, um, I, I think that's a workable approach, uh, given where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Buscher. I believed I've moved through the list of parties who filed briefs, did I miss anyone on briefs? And if not, I will move first to Mr. Keeling, because you had your hand up first.
And I think Ms. Mazer, uh, filed a brief on the counties as well. Um, or there was a joint brief from Ms. Mazer and some others.
Ms. Mazer, let's elevate Ms. Mazer, because I don't see, I'm going to be frank, I don't see this brief in my list. So you may have to summarize the brief, and I apologize for that. Uh, Ms. Mazer, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, um, yeah, um, we did file a brief, um, like 7:30 on Wednesday morning. Um, and it was signed by me and Mr. Keeling, um, uh, Ms. DeJardan, Roger Moore, Dean Ruiz, and Dan Whaley. So is that a brief that you don't have?
I'm checking with my team, it's not on our FTP list. And I apologize for that, so I, I will be honest and say I did not read it, and I'm interested, so please take your time.
It had a huge effect, I can tell.
Uh, but I'm checking to make sure we have it for our record, I mean, I'm, I'm indicating here, but,
um, yeah.
And I did not read it, so if you could probably go proceed, but we will make sure we don't close today without verifying that we have it and it's in our record appropriately. Oh, do you want, should I elevate Mr. Keeling as well, let's please elevate-
Yeah, that would be great, thank you, and I think he is probably surprised to hear he didn't submit a brief.
Right, exactly.
Um, and, and perhaps there's an error on our end, um, with respect to the list, so we'll have to-
No, it sounds like it came in, it just didn't make it to our FTP site. Okay, for that, I apologize.
Um, given all of that, I mean, I think, well, I'll just begin and I'll hand it off to- I think, well, I'll just begin and I'll hand it off to Mr. Keeling. I mean, I think my discomfort has to do with you know, as I was quoted in DWR's brief of saying it was a long shot. So I don't really think there's a lot to this conflict allegation, but you know, I still am concerned on behalf of my clients and the people I've been working with that you know, the outcome of some other proceeding could could put I don't know that there's anything that DWR or the hearing officer could do to prevent there from being some kind of effect on this proceeding later. And I think that's why a lot of our briefs address the issue of the integrity of the record and making sure, trying to make sure to protect that because of the tremendous effort that it takes to make such a record and the fact that it is a it's a fabric that's made up of all the different parts that all the different protestants have been you know, bringing together and will be continuing to put together. So it's it appears to create some kind of unknown risk of 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 that still occurring, even with the assurances we've heard, you know, regarding the DWR's waiver. So you know, I think we had asked, you know, that there be some kind of definitive decision as much as the hearing officer could make it, you know, in this proceeding to try to protect against that. But with that, I'll hand it off to Mr. Keeling and see what he was intending to say at the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. And good afternoon, Mr. Keeling.
Good afternoon. I'm happy to be elevated again, even though you you deep sixed our brief. I feel humiliated, but now I'm elevated. I'm okay. I'm okay. Our concern has always been with the integrity of the record, both in this proceeding and in other proceedings in which it might be used. I believe that the colloquy between Ms. Carol, Mr. Donlin, Mr. Mr. Later, Mr. Buscher and yourself may have addressed that. My concern was, yes, we understand that they've they're not going to go after they're gonna they're not they're not seeking a remedy in this proceeding. And we understand that the DWR has reserved its right to reassert if it wishes its its DQ position with respect to some Mac in other proceedings, administrative or judicial. Our concern was that in doing so, DWR would also seek to exclude or object to evidence generated in this hearing in those other proceedings. For example, cross examination by an attorney from the so Mac firm in this proceeding yields information that Ms. Missouri and I might want to use in another judicial proceeding. What we didn't want to see was an objection from DWR in that proceeding against that evidence on the ground that there was a conflict. If I understand Ms. Carol correctly, there will be no such objection. She's agreeing to that. That doesn't mean she's waiving other potential objections, and certainly that's not before us. Am I misunderstanding?
I don't think so.
My golly. I've been demoted, elevated and ratified all in a few minutes. Thank you very much.
Go. I'm sorry. Was that Ms. Missouri? Ms. Ms. Carol.
Apologies. No, yeah, when you're not looking up, it's hard to tell us apart. It's all fine. I want to make sure that I'm absolutely clear and I'm not answering on the fly and creating more problems with not clearly stating our position. So I'd like to request 10 minutes so that I can write it down and make sure that I have it exactly right so that I can read it into the record and that we're talking about what we're actually doing. I just want to make absolutely clear. Would that be possible?
Yes, because then I can read this brief.
There you go.
Right, which is also important to me. Before we break, I see we have some. Let me see if there are some other things that might come up, and then we will take we will take a break and come back, and that'll be helpful to me. If we can please elevate Ms. Dejardin.
And while you bring Ms. Dejardin on there, I'll just point out that in our brief, we do provide examples of this issue of the evidence being used elsewhere and in particular at the Delta Stewardship Council proceedings on the water fix, for instance, and it was brought in, you know, hearing evidence was brought in, you know, by DWR and by appellants in that matter, and then it was relied discussed and relied upon in the draft decision that came out of that proceeding. So that's maybe one piece of you know, is that so we tried to explain, you know, give you an example about why we would be concerned about, you know, not just here, but elsewhere. So I mean, I think and again, DWR's waiver seems to address that it will not make that come that objection in the other proceedings, and maybe it will be clarified with what Ms. Carol comes back with. But again, I don't think that the things that could be done here without forcing the issue and stopping things here and making it get resolved elsewhere. I think there's still this risk, and that's what I think there's still discomfort with about what, you know, a different court might decide and how that might might come back to us in this proceeding. And then the closely related proceedings at the Water Board are also a concern as well. And I mean, I think it would be helpful if DWR would waive as to those proceedings at least as well, you know, because those are so closely related, especially, you know, the petition that they have on file that isn't deemed isn't complete yet. But with the extension, the four oh one water quality certification and those kind of things are all kind of in this same space. So to the extent I do think it's concerning that DWR hasn't offered to even waive as to those things.
Thank you, Ms. Missouri.
Thank you. I wanted to raise an objection to DWR providing anything orally at this point because they've argued they have nothing on the table. The only thing we had to respond to, and I did request and you did grant that DWR provide in writing was the email notice that they provided. They cannot both claim they have nothing on the table and then request that the hearing recess for 10 minutes so they can put something new on the table. I think the hearing officer needs to rule on the outstanding objection that was placed orally on April twenty second, asking for Kelly Tabor to be paused because of the perceived conflict. And that is what's there, and they asked to delay it until after at the end of the panel and the hearing officers continuing having Ms. Ms. Tabor go in order, given that DWR has represented that that conflict is resolved. If if DWR wants to put something on the table, it needs to be brought up correctly with respect to rule three point one of professional procedure. And I don't feel that DWR has adequately quickly characterized either the scope of a conflict or the nature of its waiver. And that's just it's not proper procedure, and it's not an ethical way to raise such serious issues or to clear them up. And and I don't think people should be in the process. We've already had a long discussion where DWR tried to orally orally offer corrections. We had DWR submit something in writing. They had the chance to do so. And we can't keep having this be unclear. It took an enormous amount of work and research to try to clarify the procedural irregularities that have been raised to date. It needs to not continue. There need to be proper motions if DWR wants to.
And I understand your points. Thank you. I will clarify that DWR's request for delay was withdrawn, so that objection or request is not on the table. There's nothing for me to act upon. That's my understanding. Any remaining objection has been, if there was one, has been extinguished. I also do find it's appropriate, and I will allow Ms. Carol to formulate a clear articulation of some of these issues. That is why we're having this discussion today. Sometimes the points of that are unclear come up in this proceeding on the fly. So that's certainly something that I'm going to allow, and I will extend that courtesy to the other parties to this proceeding if we are in a situation where there is a need for them to articulate a very clearly on the record, a particular position, and I'm asking them to do it to some extent on the fly. So I will allow for that. But before we break, and I'm probably just go till two o'clock, but before we break, is there anything else? And we can come back at two, and I appreciate your patience as we work through this. Mr. Buscher, please.
Sorry, I should have said this the first time I talked, so I apologize. But just very briefly, the other issue that we we had raised and that I don't think we've addressed is any potential taint from the conflict, you know, in being imputed onto other parties in this proceeding. And if the conflict is based on this proceeding, I think that there would appropriately be a waiver of that as well. So that other protestants are not prejudiced in the future based on how this proceeding goes.
Can you clarify for me what you mean by that? I didn't follow.
So
which the.
Protestants were requested to collaborate as cooperate as they could. We have done that and worked, you know, as a group to try to order cross examination or make sure that overlapping subjects are not covered by two attorneys. And I don't I don't think there's been any problem with that. I don't have any concern over that, but I also don't want to hear six months from now in some other forum that DWR is accusing right, Baykeeper, yeah, Law School, or any of the other protesting parties here of having confidential information that they shouldn't have had because they were working with so much. So they've they've notified everybody that this conflict exists. They seem to consent to so much continuing to work on this. It seems like that consent should extend to whatever collaboration was occurring among those parties.
Understood. I think I was trying to clarify, and I think you've made it clear, Mr. Buscher. I'm understanding that this is different than just any evidence that that is developed in this proceeding that this would be a collaboration that occurs in this proceeding and that it would not be carried with the the other protestants in other forums as a potential basis for objection by DWR.
Correct.
Understood. And I think Ms. Carol, I'll give you a chance to think that over. If we're going to take a break anyway, you can think that is a slightly different twist that I had thought about before. So thank you, Ms. Missouri, please.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Kinsey. I think the other thing that may be helpful in terms of the arguments that were made in various briefs regarding the the usefulness of a stay in order to make sure that we're proceeding once all the clouds have cleared with respect to this record. I think it, you know, Ms. Carol seemed to say that, you know, they that DWR doesn't tend to file in another forum, and I think it would be helpful to know when that is planned, and if it's imminent, then you know, that may well shed light on what should happen in this proceeding. And so I'm a little concerned about shutting the door on everything today. If tomorrow a motion, I don't know what the motion or complaint would be. But if it gets filed in another forum and then, you know, everything we've said here is, you know, colored by what's actually happening because it hasn't actually happened here. So if if that's going to happen very soon, I would think it would be best to wait until that happens. So my question to DWR is if it knows when, you know, it's going to be filing such a thing, or is it just saying like they reserve the right to do it at some unknown point in the future, I think may be important. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Missouri. I'm trying to think if I have a follow up question. So the concern there is that if there is if DWR files a motion to disqualify the Somac firm in another proceeding, that that activity would still have an impact on our our proceeding, even with the waiver with respect to this proceeding and any evidence developed here.
And I believe that's what Mr. Kelly was speaking about the last time we were together is that there's nothing that DWR can do or the hearing officer can do to prevent a court from, you know, whatever remedy it's going to give. Again, this is somewhat speculative, but it is a real risk, you know. So like I said, you know, I think, and what we said in our brief is that the hearing officer does have authority to manage the hearing efficiently and make sure that everyone's getting their due process, et cetera. So, you know, I think we were thinking of it not so much as whether, you know, I, as a representative of protestant, have standing per se, but more as the hearing officer's, you know, duty and powers to manage this hearing and trying to protect against to protect the integrity of the record. So again, the I just worry that if if the door gets shut on this issue here, but if it's very much open in another proceeding, which it sounds like from Ms. Carol's remarks, she's saying it's quite imminent, like that concerns me.
Thank you, Ms. Missouri. I'm going to read the brief. I may have a follow up question after after that. But I should I should read read the words. Mr. Banks, please.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Kinsey. Let me try to contextualize I think what everybody's concerns are and hopefully provide some assistance in addressing them. And I don't speak from a blank slate. I have dealt with conflict issues throughout my career, and I've tried conflict matters. I certainly have appeared at a number of recusal hearings. So first and foremost, we should keep in mind that if a recusal proceeding gets filed, for example, in the coordinated proceeding in Superior Court, as I understand it, that proceeding would only be germane to issues in that court. In other words, a superior court judge does not have jurisdiction to make any order that would impact this proceeding. The only court that can do that, of course, is well, it's you, Hearing Officer Kinsey or Reviewing Court. But sister courts cannot issue orders directing, impacting or affecting the activities in a sister court. So I don't see any meaningful concern or possibility that if a recusal proceeding gets filed in the Superior Court, for example, which would have jurisdiction, that the outcome of that proceeding could impact this proceeding, particularly given Ms. Carol's proffers today and what she's going to present to us in writing. As to the concern that somehow there may be a collateral imputation of confidential knowledge, that too, to my ear at least, seems like a non issue because the parties to whom DWR would be making that objection, that hypothetical objection, do not owe DWR a fiduciary duty. Lawyers have two fiduciary duties, loyalty and an obligation to provide confidences. In the absence of those duties, and you find that the same concepts expressed in the cases that discuss who has standing to raise a conflict issue. But in the absence of those duties, I don't see an objection that DWR could make in the future that would be efficacious. So again, to summarize, I think the parties can cooperate without fear, as somebody put it, being tainted by some level of confidential information. A and then B, I don't see any meaningful risk that a ruling on a recusal motion in a collateral court could have any impact on this proceeding, its integrity, the integrity of the record, the evidence adduced during the hearing. So and obviously, the use of that evidence in a sister court hearing is going to be up to the judge in that court. So that will have to be done on it. On a evidence by evidence basis, you know, obviously, what gets generated here is hearsay, and, you know, usually the parties would stipulate if there are going to be aspects of evidence that are used in a different proceeding. But hopefully that clarifies at least some of the concerns that I'm hearing our colleagues express today. Hearing our colleagues um express today.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. I appreciate that. I will turn to you, Mr. Keeling, but I also see Mr. Kelly and Mr. Moore. We can continue this conversation. I will commit to. We will pick up at once we have a chance to take the break, but Mr. Keeling, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'd like to follow up on Mr. Boucher's comments and see if I can elaborate a little bit. Uh. Ms. Ms. Missouri, Mr. Moore and I represent counties and agencies in a number of related. Matters administrative and judicial, Court of Appeal and Trial Court. All concerning the tunnel. In most. If not all of those proceedings. We work with the SOMAC firm. We file joint briefs with the SOMAC firm. We confer with them. We have uh we obviously strategic and tactical meetings with the SOMAC firm. And that concludes this proceeding per your request. Uh, what we don't want to see, and I I and I'll let Eric Eric speak for himself. But what we don't want to see. Is as we go down the line, and we will continue to be working with SOMAC lawyers. Uh, on these matters, we don't want to see some sudden out of the blue motion to disqualify. All of us because we work with SOMAC in these matters. I think I've, if I I hope I've clarified Mr. Boucher's point, but maybe he can speak for himself.
Thank you, Mr. Keeling. Okay, thank you, Mr. Busher. Uh, I think I said next I would turn to Mr. Kelly. If we can please elevate Mr. Kelly, and then I see your hand, Ms. Missouri. Good afternoon, Mr. Kelly.
Uh, good afternoon, and I I have a couple of minutes, and then I have a board meeting that I have to walk into, but I wanted to just get this um out in front of everybody. Uh, one of the things I think that hasn't been discussed is if DWR is going to move eminently. To um. Have a court find that there's a conflict. I think a real concern is that, notwithstanding the waiver of a remedy. I think that if DWR was successful in having a court find that SOMAC had a conflict. SOMAC would likely be legally required or ethically obligated to withdraw. As counsel for its clients in this proceeding pursuant to the rules of professional conduct. Um, I think that that's a real um. Possible outcome, and so I'll let Mr. Banks. Uh, uh, um, address that issue to the extent that he feels that he needs to, but I think that that's a a real possibility. So I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, and and maybe we can certainly hear from Mr. Banks, but. I guess I'm surprised by this assertion because I I don't.
So maybe just to.
Please.
Miss Carol, Miss Carol indicated that. SOMAC's participation in this proceeding. Is going to form the basis of such an action in another forum, so I suspect that they're going to go to court. And and uh use their participation here as part of the basis of a disqualification attempt. If a court says that SOMAC has a conflict. I don't know that SOMAC could ethically. Continue to represent those clients against DWR in this proceeding. If a court tells them that they have a conflict of interest, I think the rules of professional conduct would govern. Um, who they could represent and where. And so I just raised that as a possibility, and as I said, and I just. That that came to mind when Ms. Carol said that this participation here was going to form the basis of. Um, that action, and so. Yeah.
And maybe this is for Ms. Carol to address later. That is not what I understood from Ms. Carol. So this is an important point to clarify. Did not understand that. SOMAC's participation in this proceeding would form a basis for seeking disqualification in some other proceeding. But that maybe is something I will leave to you to think about and won't put you on the spot, Ms. Carol, quite right away.
And and I apologize. I need to get into my board meeting, and so Mr. Mr. Donlin has the reins from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Um, I think uh. I believe Ms. Missouri, you're next. Then I'll turn to Mr. Banks and then to Mr. Cho. Oh, I'm sorry. I also have Roger Moore. I will get to you as well, but let's go to Ms. Missouri.
Thanks, um. Every time we think we're sorting this out, we end up back in a bit of a quagmire, and I think it's really. There's still a cloud, no matter what. If you if we try to go forward today, knowing this imminent filing. And with, you know, I think none of us know all the, you know, we do have to understand the rules of professional conduct and follow them. Um, but this was kind of what I was getting at with. Whether it be a remedy that another court might seek, and. I will look back at Mr. Banks's brief, but I'm not sure there's any citation provided for why, um, you know, a remedy provided in a trial court couldn't also. Uh, somehow, you know, have relevance in a in another proceeding. But. And then if there were other ethical obligations that fell upon the firm, once there was such an outcome in a different proceeding. You know, that that really could throw a wrench in in this proceeding because of the um. You know, like I've mentioned in the past, SOMAC is representing some of the very most affected local agencies um in. Uh, under the footprint of this project. Um, so. Um. That's why I think it makes more sense. To. Wait to see what is going to happen with these allegations um. Before barreling forward um with this proceeding because if, for instance, um. Those, I mean, and again, this is hypothetical, and. I think a long shot, as I was quoted, which I agree with. Is that it it could lead to the need to stay this proceeding so that those parties could seek different counsel theoretically, right? And then that would throw everything into, you know, and we're we're just getting into the part of. Protestants, you know, preparing their cases in chief, and obviously, that's a huge effort and is taking place right now. So the farther down the road you get with the counsel you have. You know, the more prejudice would would go to the parties that could, whether the directly affected or. You know, the the parties that Mr. Keeling and others and I represent that, you know, are maybe one step outside of that circle. So I. I just um. It. It it concerns me, the idea of going forward. I would also point out, I saw the mention of hearsay a couple of times um in the briefs, and. I think that overlooks, you know, in terms of the evidence in this proceeding, that overlooks the fact that other proceedings also may have administrative processes and records. Um, where, you know, so it's not a given that. It wouldn't be possible to admit evidence from this proceeding or that there'd be easily objectionable, you know, under hearsay, I don't think is, you know, most of us who work in um environmental and administrative writs. No, so I I wouldn't think that's. Um, very helpful to talk about hearsay. Um, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Missouri, and I I appreciate your comments. I'm going to read the brief. I I just, I guess at this point, and just so you know, to be forthright, I'm just not convinced that. There is any realistic scenario, I mean, barring, I'm sorry, I'm presuming that. Uh, the courts will behave reasonably. I think that's a fair presumption. It may not always be accurate, but I don't think I can go into a world where I assume that courts will behave unreasonably. That is beyond, I I just can't. That's too many steps removed. But presuming that other courts will behave reasonably and to and and issue orders that are appropriate and reasonable and in compliance with the law, I guess I'm at this point still not convinced that there is. Uh, a a world in which the SOMAC firm would be disqualified from representing their clients in this proceeding. Um, if DWR elects to go forward and effectively waive. Uh, their opportunity to object to the SOMAC firm's participation in this proceeding. But with that, I will turn to Mr. Cho.
Thank you, Ms. Kenzie. Austin Cho for North Delta Water Agency at all. Um, on on that point specifically, I mean, I I think your understanding of the situation um. Would would make sense uh for that that statement there. Uh, but one of my clarifying questions to Ms. Carol was whether. Any relief that DWR might seek in another forum would be based on SOMAC's participation in this hearing, and my recollection was the answer was yes. Um, which uh you said was not your understanding. So I, this is something that maybe Ms. Carol could. Address in in her written statement when we come back from a break. But I I do think that that is uh potentially a critical issue with. What the practical implications of a potential disqualification, if that should be the end result in another forum, could have on this proceeding.
Thank you, Mr. Cho. Uh, if we can please elevate Ms. Safdie. Good afternoon, Ms. Safdie.
Good afternoon. Thank you, and my my apologies. I'm not able to work my camera right now, but um. I did just want to to clarify one point is adding to the last statements that were that were made. Um, I I I think maybe one thing that would be helpful here as we go into recess and DWR thinks about the scope of its statement. Is to clarify its affirmative consent to SOMAC and the entire firm's participation in this proceeding. Um, and perhaps that that affirmative consent could also embrace the questions that Mr. Busher raised, and I think our. Our concern there, and I I agree that I couldn't see a motion for a disqualification or excluding. Um, being successful on this basis, but we do need to make sure as other parties go forward. And coordinate in accordance with the hearing officer's instructions, um, that there there isn't any imputation of uh. Of, you know, taint or or concerns or confidences, however we want to frame it to uh to our uh to our representation, and I think uh those those issues. Under the professional rules, I think, could be addressed by um not just a waiver, but an affirmative consent.
Thank you, Ms. Safdie. Mr. Keeling.
Yes, thank you. Apropos of Mr. Boucher's comments. Um, I would ask you as soon as practicable to take a look at the brief Ms. Missouri and I and. Um, Ms. Dejardin and others put together. The question of the use of this transcript in this hearing. In other proceedings is not hypothetical or speculative. It happened already. And vis a vis the water fix proceeding, and our examples are in, we have a link in our brief. To demonstrate that, so. Uh, just to reinforce Mr. Boucher's comment.
Thank you, Mr. Keeling, and I fully understand that. I mean, certainly, Stephen setting aside court proceedings, as has been pointed out, while the transcripts and hearsay and and that type of thing is. Regularly a part of administrative proceedings, and that is, those are significant with respect to this subject matter, so. I I understand that. Thank you. Um, I think Ms. Dejardin, and then we'll turn to Mr. Banks, and then I I'm going to, at some point, I think now, well, let's see, I have someone else on the attendee list. Mr. Moore, I keep skipping Mr. Moore. Can we please elevate Mr. Moore?
Could I speak really briefly while we're waiting for Mr. Moore?
I think he's right here. Mr. Moore, please go ahead, and I apologize. Your hand was up, and then I. I do have a longer attention span than that, but there's a lot going on, so thank you. Please go ahead.
Uh, no words. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, just fine.
Yeah, there are a lot of cats to hurt here. I I I understand, and I can be very brief. Uh, uh, Roger Moore for California Water Impact Network. Uh, Seawind was among the signatories to the joint brief that I'm glad you all have the opportunity to read now along with. Ms. Missouri, Mr. Keeling, and and Ms. Dejardin and 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 others. I uh. Uh, the positions are, I think, clearly laid out there. I simply want to mention one of. One of the points raised that I haven't heard today, but it provides some additional context. Uh, to the concern that there may be some sort of, you know, residual taint that if not applied directly to this proceeding will involve. It somehow, and that is the subject of unreasonable delay. Um. It is beyond dispute that the uh notice of intent that uh included uh the clearly disclosed. Uh, uh. Ms. Shorrock's uh participation uh. Was from August 5th, 2024. Um, more than eight months have passed, and. All there was, and it apparently has been withdrawn, but with the nuances that we've been discussing. Um, is innuendo, not emotion, not evidence, not supporting argument. Um, there have been, needless to say, many procedural opportunities between last August. Uh, and when this colloquy began. Um, it just provides some additional context to, you know, why there would be concerns about things being blow uh uh. Some some lingering residue from this proceeding uh blowing up elsewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, and I think for the most part, I agree, which I expressed. Earlier. In this this afternoon, which is that. To the extent DWR is not. Filing a motion seeking some remedy at this point, then with respect to this proceeding. The matter is waived. There has been a period of time that has passed. The matter, the 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 fact of the potential conflict has is now. Not just constructively, but actively actively actually um at the forefront and known to DWR, and this is the time uh for DWR to act or to. Um, waive its opportunity to do so with respect to this proceeding, and I want to be very careful about stating that part. I'm not purporting to speak to the effect on any other. Uh, proceeding at this point, but including evidence developed in this proceeding. That's my understanding. Mr. Banks, to you, please.
Uh, thank you, Hearing Officer Kenzie. Let me um just very briefly respond to, again, the concerns that I'm hearing. First, vis a vis Mr. Kelly's comment. Um, the conflict for purposes of this proceeding is waived, and the process of being waived or is waived. That would extinguish any obligation under the rules. God forbid, um, SOMAC were to be recused of some other proceeding. Uh, to terminate its attorney client relationships as a consequence in this proceeding. So I I still, again, do not see that any such ruling um in a sister court could have an impact. Um, on this case. Given my understanding of what um DWR is prepared to proffer now in writing. Um, the authority, somebody had asked um about uh every supporting the proposition that. Sister courts cannot impact the proceedings in another sister court, only a reviewing court can do that, is found at footnote. Uh, six uh on our brief at uh page 12, and we cite Ford versus Superior Court. At 188 Cal at third, 737 comma 741. And 742. Um, and then I do appreciate counsel's comments about delay, obviously latches. If there is a recusal motion, it's going to be a very significant issue in that proceeding from the SOMAC firms' perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Ms. Dejardin.
Thank you. Two things. Um, so. A a conflict waiver is supposed to include enough information about. The relevant facts that one can make a determination about the scope of the conflict. I specifically asked DWR to provide some information about the scope of the conflict. They declined to do so. Um, and the hearing officer, you don't have information about the scope of the conflict either, so I don't think you should. Make any assumptions about what. Another court might or might not do because it isn't provided with the waiver, and um I did have a case site, uh. Shepherd, Mouldling, Richter, and Hampton uh. Cal uh in 2016 that um. A conflict waiver has to have material information in order to be, you know, valid. And and that's just not here, and part of the issue is, again, it wasn't. You know, the proper rules of procedure for raising this conflict just weren't involved. Um, uh, Mr. Keeling in our brief characterized it as innuendo, and yes, it's basically innuendo. Um, so that, you know, I again, I don't think that the conflict waiver that DWR has on the record is proper. Um, I don't know that they can amend it on the fly to create something that's proper, and the underlying issue is. That, you know, they deliberately are providing information about the underlying conflict. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, and one more thing. The Water Board. I'm a historian and I've read the historic Water Rights decision, including decision 1275, that the grant of the permits for the State Water Resources Control Board. And that was the foundation for, in the framework for the Bay Delta Water Quality Control Plan Updates. So there's an enormous interest by the Water Board itself in the integrity of the administrative record for this proceeding. I don't know what would happen if, in all future decisions involving the, you know, regulation of the projects. There was an issue of taint of the administrative record. It would be, it would be very much against the interests of the Water Board. And the Water Board Counsel is not present in this hearing. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Desjardins. Once again, I just can reiterate, we can think about this over the break, but I just don't see the pathway where this record, based on what has been offered, not just offered, but it's effectively what I think will have occurred with this waiver from DWR by seeking to proceed with our hearing tomorrow. I do not see any reasonable possibility that this record would be tainted in some way. I think I look forward to some additional clarification from Ms. Carroll, once you've had a chance to think about it. But that is still where I end up based on what we have before us. In addition, I've deliberately not asked for additional facts about the underlying conflict. I don't think that would be appropriate. I think we have, would have the threshold issue of whether or not I have authority or jurisdiction to act on any disqualifying motion. And that is something that should be addressed before we even get to the issue of conflict. And if I were to look at the issue of conflict, I don't know if that would conflict me out of this proceeding. And frankly, that's another part. So I have very carefully not asked about the, because I think that is another can of worms that we would have to, if we were at that point, address very carefully. Ms. Carroll, please.
I just want to make sure that it's on the record that we disagree with the characterizations being made about our waiver by the various protesters. We've been very clear that we are not waiving the conflict. So I just want to make sure that that is absolutely clear before we take our break.
Do you mean not waiving the conflict for purposes of other proceedings?
Right. We are not waiving the conflict. Well, we're not waiving the conflict. We're not saying there is no conflict. We're not pursuing a remedy here. We won't be raising it here. There will not be any objections related to the conflict. And I'll put this in writing. But the conflict still exists. It's not pursued in this forum, and it's not before you in this forum.
Are you consenting to the conflict?
No.
All right. Well, maybe now is a good time. Might be a good time for a break. But Mr. Banks, please.
Very briefly, the, I think this is a matter of semantics. And perhaps Ms. Carroll and I have a disagreement on that point. But given DWR is proffer, they are waiving the conflict for this proceeding. My understanding is DWR is preserving its right to raise the conflict in other proceedings, not this one. So that, that is a waiver for purposes of this matter. I don't know how you could characterize it as anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. I think we all have some things to think about. Given that, I would like to take a little bit of time. Let's give us at least 20 minutes. If, let's plan to return back at 2:35. And I will turn first at that point to DWR. I will see you in 20 minutes. Thank you.
I will look first to our court reporter. Are you ready for us to go back on the record?
Yes, ready to go.
Thank you very much. And before handing things over to Ms. Carol with DWR. And this actually, I should make sure, Ms. Carol, do you mind going on camera or saying something just to make sure you're here? Hopefully everyone's okay, great. I realized I can't see you, so I'm not always sure what the world here. I did want to remind, and I did get a chance to read the jointly filed brief. Thank you very much for that. It also was quite helpful. A good opportunity, and I apologize that it was misfiled in our system. It was, it's a good opportunity to ask of all of you to please do, when you have important filings, please do check and make sure they're on the FTP site. We are. Our system, as you can tell, is not automated. We are human and we are not necessarily perfect. Sometimes things get named differently or filed and just make sure it's there that you can find it. And if you cannot, please feel free to reach out to us and please do reach out to us and we can make sure we have it. I'm hopeful that the, what did we call it? The vast resources of the state will someday in the future provide the AHO with a more sophisticated filing system and we're working towards that, but for now, we have this system, which for the most part works. And I'm glad that today I was able to take the opportunity to take a break and make sure that I was apprised of all of the arguments that had been presented in writing. So thank you for that. And thank you for that break. With that, Ms. Carol, I will turn to you to take the floor on what you may have had a chance to work through over our break.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Kinsey, and I will provide this in writing. After I can speak through it, I didn't have an opportunity to set up the service list and get this mailed out beforehand. So I just want to reiterate that we've all agreed and you found that there's nothing pending before you to decide. DWR is not waiving any conflict and it's going to continue to pursue its rights and remedies with respect to this conflict with Somac Simmons and Dunn in other appropriate forums. This is not a semantics issue. The facts relating to this hearing may very well be relevant to a motion filed in another forum seeking to disqualify Somac Simmons and Dunn in that separate proceeding. We're not waiving the fact that a conflict exists or waiving that facts from this proceeding may be relevant to another court or administrative body in considering the merits or scope of the conflict as to that other forum. The parties to this proceeding are on notice that DWR believes that there is a conflict with Somac Simmons and Dunn that prejudices DWR and only DWR. If you, the hearing officer, allows the CPOD hearing to timely proceed in accordance with the existing schedule, we've offered this waiver to waive any remedies that we could pursue against Somac Simmons and Dunn with respect to the conflict in this CPOD hearing and any subsequent appeal or litigation resulting from this CPOD hearing. DWR will not object to any CPOD record evidence being cited by other parties in any other proceeding on the basis of this conflict issue, but it retains its rights to object on any other basis. And I want to reiterate that the only reason that we are not raising this conflict issue here in this forum is because of the importance of this project to the state and the need to ensure that we are not delayed.
Thank you, Ms. Carol. With that, I will, well, first I'm going to add to that statement because I think there are two elements here that are important. There is DWR's statement of their waiver of a remedy. I believe, as I indicated, or as I intended to indicate in my general articulation of a tentative ruling, it is still my intent based on the arguments I've heard so far to find in a procedural ruling that DWR has in fact waived any conflict with respect to the SOMAC firm in this proceeding and with respect to the evidence developed in this proceeding and any order arising out of this proceeding. Given that it does not have a motion before the AHO at this time and does not intend to raise a request for a remedy. So that's in addition, I believe, to the voluntary, what I would call a voluntary waiver from DWR with, and that is a finding I would intend to make. And I'm conveying to you tentatively at this point with the understanding that others may have comments. So with that, I think I would like to keep this to a streamlined approach, but I think we had some outstanding tail ends. I did. I'm mostly interested if there is a request for further clarification on any of these issues, and I will look to the room. First, Ms. Carol, please.
I just want to make sure that I understand what your tentative ruling means. So you're going, you're tentatively ruling that we are waiving the conflict itself in this proceeding? Not just that we are reserving our rights with respect to this conflict. We're not saying that the conflict doesn't exist in this proceeding. We're just no longer allowed to object or seek a remedy or prevent the participation of SOMAC in the hearing. But are you, or are you saying we are actually waiving the conflict itself?
My understanding is that you are waiving waiving the conflict insofar that you have not filed a motion seeking any remedy with respect to that conflict. So there is nothing before me on the table. And if you were to raise this issue, which is, as I understand from what you've told me is not your intent, but if you were to raise this issue, for example, to object to evidence being offered into the record, I would find that that objection had been waived because it had not been raised at this time.
Okay, so to me, that's different to overrule the objection. But, or the right to pursue the conflict, but to waive the conflict itself is a different matter. And then just to clarify, we have not raised it in this forum yet, but what would our deadline be to raise it in this forum? Should we need to?
Before tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
Before we reconvene this hearing, I guess what I'm, and I think others are having, I don't see the distinction between effectively consenting to SOMAC representing the protestants in this proceeding by not filing a motion to disqualify them and waiving the conflict. I don't know if there's a distinction there, but I don't see it. I think Mr. Banks made a similar allusion to that. That is my intent. It is not my intent to, and I don't think I have the authority to, and I don't intend to go there, to have any impact on what is occurring of what I see as a waiver and what will be in my ruling as a waiver, any impact that may have on your any objection or motions with respect to SOMAC's participation in other proceedings. That is entirely separate. I don't think this would have, from where I'm sitting, any. The waiver would not carry over to other proceedings. There's no estoppel effect because it's the waiver is limited to this proceeding. That is my understanding. And I think others may articulate this better than I have, so I'm going to give them that attempt and we can circle back around. Mr. Buscher, please.
Oh, I I think your approach addresses what my suggestion and concern was going to be. There's obviously a lot of concern and care and thought being put into what these words mean in this context and how that impacts the scope of what everybody is agreeing to do or not do. And my reaction to that is number one, I think there needs to be a ruling from the hearing officer that lays out, these are the conditions under which we are moving forward, whether that is identical to or different from DWR's view of the scope of its own waiver. And then the parties, primarily DWR, needs to determine whether it wants to move forward on the current schedule under those conditions. And I think that needs to be done in writing and I appreciate the time and effort that went into laying that out clearly by Ms. Carol during the break. But ultimately, what's in the hearing, what's in the ruling from the hearing officer is what's going to matter for the scope of this proceeding. And I think whether that's tomorrow morning or Monday morning, right? I mean, I think that we need to know an answer to whether the department is willing to proceed on the conditions as you described them in a written order. And I think that's the process you described, but I think that's important here so that everybody has one set of things to look at and to understand what's happening and what's being agreed to.
Thank you, Mr. Buscher. Mr. Cho.
Thank you. I would just agree and support the additional proviso that the hearing officer made to DWR's statement. I think it's an important one. And this this proposal to still condition a waiver on the right to seek remedies that DWR has put forward seems pretty inappropriate, considering that there is already said that it is not making an objection. So I'm not exactly clear what it would be. Why it would have grounds to offer a waiver on the condition that the hearing officer conduct a hearing in accordance with the schedule that DWR would prefer. I think that should just be disposed of. The hearing officer's additional proviso relating to the issue itself being deemed waived if DWR does not actually put forward an actual objection that is relevant to these proceedings, and then we can move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Cho. Ms. DeJardan.
So I do think there's an issue of delay here. DWR did wait eight months until the hearing had convened and Ms. Shark had done cross-examination counsel and then did an objection, but they haven't actually raised any kind of objection. The only objection they raised was an objection to a quote perceived conflict and they asked that delay cross-examination till the end of her hearing. They have not, in fact, waived it. They have not, in fact, raised any objection that you could roll on. The only notice they provided you to you was an informal notice on April 11th saying, we're bringing this to your immediate attention and we're in discussions. So I think it's very important ethically to be clear that the conflict is waived because of delay, that, you know, if they want to continue, they can't say there's a conflict when they haven't actually asserted any, provided any underlying facts. And to keep saying there's a conflict we're going to raise in another forms is just not appropriate. I think ethically, if there was a conflict of interest with the hearing officer, I think you cited it in your own memo on disqualification of court staff. The hearing officer would need to take action on that under the code of judicial ethics, the canon of judicial ethics. So I think, you know, considering the issue of delay and having DWR either properly raise it or waive it is the most, you know, cleanest way to to solve, dispose of these issues rather than trying to do some kind of waiver about remedies.
Thank you, Ms. DeJardan. Mr. Keeling.
Well, this poor country boy gets confused the more he hears. Let me see if I got this right. We're going to go on from here. We're going to finish cross-examining DWR's panels and we're going to, and we're going to do that in a cooperative, like as as you asked us to do, we have been putting together and coordinating a cross-examination. So the SOMAC firm will be working with us in that and we with them in that. And then we will put on our cases in chief and consistent with your request. The parties have been coordinating in that respect too. So we'll be working, you know, hand in hand, arm in arm with the SOMAC firm through that part of this proceeding. Then we get into rebuttal cases and so on and so forth. DWR knows that right now. They know it today. If they allow that to proceed and they don't want to stop this proceeding, I don't see how they can later in any forum say, oh, we're going to object to that. I think this is an all out waiver and I would take that position. And I think you should unambiguously say that that objection has been waived. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Mr. Keeling. I'm looking, I'm giving us a pause to breathe. My intent going forward would be to, well, good, a pause and Mr. Moore, you're welcome to speak if you would like.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. I was yeah, temporarily having problems getting it to go. I agree very strongly with what Mr. Keeling and Mr. Buscher just said, and I won't repeat, but I will note that the need for precision on this issue, I think reinforces the suggestion that Mr. Buscher made. That this is something that really needs to come from the hearing officer and committed to writing so that there can be no misunderstanding. The other concern that I have is particularly about tomorrow. I think we need, I think it's only fair to the, to all the parties in the proceeding and to you as well to know whether or not we are potentially proceeding with hearings and there should be a clear understanding, I think, that if there is an 11th hour motion from DWR, it means that the hearings are not proceeding.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I'm, my next step is to turn back to have to Ms. Carol about our next steps, but I want to make sure I hear from everyone first. Ms. Merser, please.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Kinsey. I mean, I think it would be helpful to know why DWR waited so long if it is such a big concern. And I think there's been no information about that. So that's just kind of an it would be helpful to know why DWR waited so long if it is such a big concern, and I think there's been no information about that. So that's just kind of an unanswered question. Um, and then the other thing that I'm concerned about and why I think it's really important that there be a written ruling and that DWR have a chance to review it before we um, before it decides whether it wants to proceed on that basis is that the hearing officer has the authority to manage the hearing and to the extent that there's some kind of insinuation that the hearing officer is stuck with the schedule as it is laid out right now, if you know, um, I just don't think it should be, it's not an agreement. And I think this goes back to something Mr. Herrick said last week. There needs to be a ruling and the hearing officer needs to issue it, and then all the parties can react to that however they need to. I don't think there should be an agreement and and I don't think the I just wouldn't want the hearing officer to feel constrained that somehow um, you know, that this is going forward and it must proceed on the schedule that's been laid out before. You always have the ability to change the schedule if you need to, and that's within your authority. So I just, you know, to the extent that that's being, you know, and I don't know what those changes might need to be, but I I I hear Ms., and again, I don't do very well with the um, the non-written version of these agreements, and so I would like to see all this in in writing. Um, but it it seems like it was conditioned, you know, what DWR is willing to do is all conditioned on being on this schedule and that's fine, but that is subject to change at the hearing officer's discretion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Merser, and and I I do very much appreciate your points, and I think that supports why I came to the conclusion and I've come to the conclusion that a ruling from the hearing from the AHO for me is important here and accomplishes some things that are separate and apart from the consensual waiver from DWR. Um, and that's an element here. My question for you, Ms. Carroll, is going to be schedule. I will, I do want to know what what you would, well, what your preferences are. We can put it that that way. I will work as efficiently as possible to get a written ruling out. It probably won't be before tomorrow morning. Do you want time to see that written ruling before? I also am going to stand firm on this position that we should not go forward with this hearing. If DWR intends to file a motion that would include an objection um, in this proceeding, whether that motion is to for the AHO to take action or a motion um, or or I guess an indication that you're planning to immediately go to court and see if a court will take the 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 issue I'm understa-, you know. That jurisdictional question is still outstanding, but I do not want to go forward with the with the hearing without this deadline of waiver in place, but if you need an additional day or more, um, I would like to hear that and you want to see my written ruling in writing before you make that decision, that also makes sense to me, and I'm open to a request to essentially take tomorrow off calendar and possibly other days. And that's what I'm turning to you on now. And if you need five minutes to confer, I'm open to that.
I hmm, okay. I think I'm going to take you up on the five minutes to confer. I don't think my answer is going to change. I don't think we want to see a written ruling at this point. I do want to reiterate that we don't think that it is necessary for us to waive our conflict in this forum by not raising it here for you because there isn't anything before you to decide. It's as if we hadn't brought it and given notice. Uh, we are agreeing to not pursue remedy or to object um, as we, as I stated earlier. So I do want to make sure that we believe there is a distinction as to what we are waiving here and that we are not waiving the conflict. If you were to rule that we are waiving the conflict in this forum, I think that is problematic for us. Um, and that's where I want to take my five minutes to confer with my colleagues.
And that and that's fair, Ms. Carroll, and I, at the risk of reopening this whole conversation, which I do not want to do, um, I, I I guess what is it in, and you can come back to me, but I'm trying to think through what is the distinction between waiving any objection to the conflict um, on the basis of the conflict and waiving the conflict for purposes of this proceeding in itself. I'm I'm not sure. I can think that through, but I'm I'm not sure I've I've I follow, as I indicated before, I'm not sure I follow that, but I will give you some time to consider it. Let's go ahead and hear very briefly, if you will, um, Mr. Moore, please go ahead.
If we proceed with the current panel, my understanding is Ms. Tabor is up and I and I believe one or two others would be as well. So it absolutely relates to the very thing that we are talking about. And so um, uh, I guess we will hear what DWR thinks after uh, uh, conferring, but um, uh, you know, we it it just to to be clear about Seawind's position, we think there absolutely needs to be a written ruling from the AHO clarifying where things are. And from the vantage point of this protest in any way, it would be um, very improper and 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 quite prejudicial to go forward with a hearing that we know is is going to uh, uh, relate to this very question. Uh, the way that it it would certainly affect, for example, how I would want to go uh, about with cross-examination uh, tomorrow. It would be far better to get a clear understanding first of where things stand on that, which we will have once there's a written ruling.
So your request, just to be clear, Mr. Moore, your request is that you would see the written ruling before we proceed with the hearing?
I think we should all see the written ruling.
Well, yes, okay, the fair enough because and the reason for that is because it would affect the content of your cross-examination potentially.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. De Jardan.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I wanted to say just time-wise, um, I spent all day Saturday and half the day on Sunday. You know, trying to research this and it just got so complicated because the standard procedures for um, you know, requesting both qualification of counsel weren't followed. There wasn't any way for you to make a ruling or say you have to go to another venue. And I did want to request that you consider vacating tomorrow's hearing date about to give us a chance to to consider it and also because I was wanting to, you know, work on my cross-examination questions. And this is just such a major question about the hearing and the evidentiary record that um, I'm having to participate. Um, but it's just, uh, I, Ms. Carroll, rules, rules of professional procedure require you know, if it is a serious conflict, it needs to be raised ethically. It need to follow.
Ms. De Jardan, I think that's that's enough on that point. I don't think that's an appropriate topic here for you to um, address Ms. Carroll in that way. I I read, I read your brief. I did read your brief and I noted your reference to the rules of professional conduct. Uh, and I have seen that in writing, so thank you for that. Mr. Busher.
Yeah, sorry, very briefly. Number one, I I agree, Mr. Moore, right, if and I am sympathetic that it is three o'clock and people like me keep weighing in. Um, we're not going to have an order before we start tomorrow. We can't start tomorrow. And that's that's reality, I I think, right? We're scheduled to start Monday and maybe that's uh, enough time. And if not, we've got a break then. And then the other question I wanted to follow up on was Ms. Merser's from earlier as to if there's any information DWR can share about when it plans to raise this issue and whatever other forum it determines is appropriate. Because that may impact whether we start the fifth or the fourteenth um, to resume these proceedings, once we've had a chance to see a written ruling as to under what conditions these proceedings can resume.
Will you clarify the connection for me, Mr. Busher? Why is the the timing of DWR's action with respect to a different proceeding relevant to our timing?
My understanding is that DWR wishes to proceed because they view delay as problematic. If they are moving forward on Monday to get this resolved in whatever the appropriate forum is, that potential delay seems different than if they are moving forward in nine months to get this resolved in whatever the appropriate forum is.
But why does that matter? Why does that motivation matter if there's a waiver in this proceeding?
So if if the conditions in in the ruling are sufficient to cover the things that we've talked about, it may not. Um, but I, Ms. Merser, it asked, and I I just wanted to follow up just because I didn't hear an answer.
Understood. Thank you. Um, Mr. Keeling.
Well, I'm once again confused in light of the colloquy between yourself and Ms. Carroll. I think your instincts were correct, uh, Hearing Officer Kinsey. But if I heard Ms. Carroll correctly, she's saying, oh, no, they're not waiving the conflict. We as somehow and a a a distinction from maybe waiving the objection and waiving the right to sink us to seek a remedy. That's an illusory distinction. Either they're going to proceed in this substantive hearing which DWR says is the most important in the state under the cloud of a conflict of interest that has not been waived. Or they're not. They can't have it both ways. And I believe your instinct, unless I misheard you, was, yes, they're waiving the conflict in this hearing, or did I misunderstand you?
I don't think, once again, I don't think you did, Mr. Keeling.
You know, I'm, I I ought to come here more often. Thank you. Bye bye.
Thank you, Mr. Keeling. I I believe, Ms. Carroll, I owe you at least five minutes. Is that, is that, is that where we stand? Is there anything else you wanted to follow up on?
I just wanted to clarify that if you are to be issuing a written ruling, but there is still an opportunity for DWR to file a motion to bring this matter before you that the way that the ruling be written, if I can suggest this is that should DWR not file by a deadline that you select that we have waived the right to pursue the conflict in this forum. And that that should, that waiver should also apply to all parties not just DWR.
So let me make sure I'm understanding. So just as a matter of clarification, I will be issuing a written ruling. The time for DWR to file a motion or some under indicate other indication with the AHO that you um, would be seeking to object to SOMAC's participation in this proceeding um, based on the alleged conflict needs to happen. Or the deadline for that is before we reconvene this hearing. So I I'm open to if if we're reconvening the hearing before at nine AM tomorrow morning, then the deadline is nine AM tomorrow morning. If it's nine AM on Monday morning, then the deadline would be nine AM Monday morning, and that would be my intent. I am thinking about my evening and whether I might have a written ruling out before tomorrow morning so we can go forward. Um, that's a possibility too. So, I mean, we've talked about this extensively. It would not be a long ruling. But for purposes of, I do want, of course, I must be very clear, so I want to be careful about that. But that is what I'm thinking through right now. Let's go, I don't want to take this go go on for too long, but I I do want to hear all of you. We're we're making progress, I think. Mr. Cho, please.
Thank you, and I'm I'm trying not to to weigh in, but this one just, I I have to step in. The the condition that Ms. Carroll just put forward, that if DWR does not file by a certain deadline, then its opportunity to seek relief would be waived. That's the exact proposal of waiver that DWR set forward that many parties and I believe you, Madam Hearing Officer, have said is not sufficient, that the issue or the conflict itself will be deemed waived if DWR does not meet the filing deadline. I think that's critically important here, and it is not enough for DWR to either voluntarily or be deemed to have waived only the opportunity to seek remedies in this proceeding.
Thank you, Mr. Cho. Mr. Banks, please.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Kinsey. A couple of quick points. Um, to the extent that DWR is going to be given an opportunity to, my words, fish or cut bait on this issue, I think the order needs to be very clear that their obligation or the tariff for that is a proper recusal motion supported by evidence and argument, something, and not merely an indication that uh, we're going to do something in the future. And then um, I would, and certainly on behalf of the firm, uh, encourage this process to can, that hearing to continue and resume uh, tomorrow. Uh, you've had now a week and a half's delay. It's really inconvenient to the SOMAC firms' clients uh, to be on and then off depending upon the vagaries of this process. This issue has been hashed to death. Um, it is what it is. Obviously, um, Hearing Officer, this is your call. It's your time this evening, but to the extent that you can get a ruling out by tomorrow morning so that the parties can proceed, uh, that would certainly be our recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. With that, Ms., well, Mr. Moore, was that a, was that an intended hand?
Yeah, I I just want to make it clear that that Seawind strongly objects to uh, proceeding tomorrow in the circumstance that there is a last-minute ruling or last-minute um, uh, filing or submission by DWR. The morning of the hearing when cross-examination would proceed does not provide a fair opportunity for the for the other protestants uh, who as for the reasons that I went through and won't repeat, would would need to proceed quite differently. So this needs to be paused until there is a clear written ruling and we can move forward from there.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I mean, that reminds me to to clarify, if 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 DWR files a motion with respect to raising objections and seeking a remedy with respect to um, this alleged conflict, then the evidentiary portion of the hearing is off, right? That it's not, we're not proceeding, we're not, both are not occurring at the same time. Um, and I I think I know DWR has a significant interest in moving forward and I um, to some extent, I'm relying on that significant interest to bring to, I I think fish or cut bait is a polite way of saying it, yes. So um, to make a decision on this so that we can have a clear path forward. I I don't mean that as using it as leverage, but just that we all have an interest in having a clear path forward and and laying that out as efficiently as possible. Uh, Ms. Carroll, is this a good time? You're welcome to speak. And then also, if you'd like, whenever you'd like your five minutes, you're welcome to it.
Thank you. I think I'll take my five minutes after I say this, but um, in understanding that we want things to move forward quickly, we would like this to be resolved as soon as possible. Um, we would be looking for an expedited process with relation to anything that we file regarding the conflict. So I just wanted to ask for that, and if you have a set of procedure already available, uh, we'd we'd love to see it.
No, we didn't. Uh, that's a fair ask, but no, with having never dealt with a um, a a similar, although there was there was reference to the Morongo case, that was an interesting, that that is true. That was a, there's some parallels there. Um, so that may be a a template to look to, but um, I'm hoping this is, I believe this is the first and hopefully the last time we've had. Um, and Mr. Banks, it's been lovely to have you, but have a malpractice attorney on our, in one of our water rights proceedings. Let's go ahead and take five minutes. We'll come back at three sixteen and go from there. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. All right, we are at three sixteen. I will look to our court reporter. Are you ready for us to go back on the record?
Yes, ma'am, ready to go.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Carol, are you ready to provide an update?
I'm as ready as I think I can get. Um. So here's where we're at. We agree with you that the conflict issue isn't before you to decide. And that if you provide a ruling that states that we're waiving the conflict, you're essentially creating an argument in other forums that we're stopped from bringing the conflict forward, and that's a big concern for us. We would much prefer that your ruling state that we're waiving the pursuit of the conflict in this forum, as I previously stated. And we would like the opportunity to be able to file a motion if necessary to protect the integrity of this process, because this is very serious, and we do not believe that we should have to waive our conflict um, or jeopardize it in other forms based upon the actions that are taken here. So that's where we stand.
So I think so. It sounds like the fundamental issue is whether or not a waiver of the conflict for purposes of this proceeding could be construed as an a stopple of the argument in some other forum. I don't think that particular issue was not briefed when I have thought about it and looked into it. I didn't. I mean, a stopple, doesn't it? Doesn't the matter have to be actually litigated for a stopple to apply? I mean, I'm asking you on the fly, but that was my general understanding that this um.
I think there would be an argument that it has been because you're issuing a ruling on the issue.
I see.
It's because you're taking an action here that that argument is created.
But you would not be opposed, so you would not be opposed to an argument of a stopple with respect to a waiver of any objection to Somac's participation in this proceeding and objections to evidence developed. I think I've said it a number of times here, but evidence developed and and orders coming out of this hearing. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate. We don't want to waive the conflict itself, but we are willing to allow the the hearing to proceed in order to avoid delay and to ensure that the process moves forward. So and we are committed to anything that arises out of this proceeding uh in litigation or appeal.
So it sounds like the request is. I mean, it sounds like you need to see my written ruling. I mean, that that seems to be where we're getting to. Um. All right, let me, I'm gonna put that in the back of my mind and digest while Mr. Cho tells me what I should do. Mr. Cho.
Do I get that ability? Uh, thank you. Um. Yes, this is just to, you know, I I don't want to invalidate DWR's concern here. I think their concern is valid, and that's why it it seems odd that you can say that the issues are so interrelated that the waiver of a conflict here would have an impact in other venues. But if DWR were to pursue and get resolution on this conflict in other venues, that wouldn't somehow come back and affect this proceeding. How can you hold two beliefs at the same time?
Thank you, Mr. Cho. Um, I think I share your your, I understand your point, and I think that is where I had come come into this a stopple issue to some extent that um. But it's sound, I mean, based on this, what it sounds like, and I'm and I'm and and I I am concerned with continuing to do this one off delay, which I promised that I wouldn't do day by day delaying the hearing. Um, and the Somac firm and Ms. Tabor and their clients are um subject to this one day at a time delay. So I am concerned about that. On the other hand, uh, it sounds like I DWR needs a fair opportunity to decide on their appropriate path forward. But Mr. Banks, please.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Kenzie. I think you could frame your order as impacting this case only. In other words, you're you're not attempting to uh either persuade or dispersuade a judge in a collateral proceeding as to what occurs here. Um, you know, the the facts are the facts, and what has occurred has occurred, and you know, the parties are going to use it uh as they see fit, to the extent that a recusal proceeding is filed and appropriate for it. But I do think you can state that it's not your intent to impact uh through the order that you issue any collateral proceeding that might be filed, assuming one gets filed.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. And that certainly would be, I had, I thought that certainly would be my intent to include in a ruling, but I also understood that DWR, you may want to see how the language works itself out. But Ms. Carol, please.
I think along those lines, too, you know, a commitment from Somac Simmons and Dunn that this would not be a stopple would also be helpful.
Well, I think, Mr. And Mr. Banks, I'll give you a chance to respond. I think Mr. Banks uh just articulated that although he cannot control what a court may do, uh, his understanding is that by ruling could be limited so as not to constitute and or or raise a basis for a stopple. But I think you're gonna you're gonna articulate that in a in a more delicate way than I just did. So please, Mr. Banks.
Well, I'll do my best. I thought you articulated it very well. I don't want to limit particularly through the use of terms like stopple. Our ability to bring a full throated opposition to the extent that a recusal notion gets filed, um, nor am I in a position to waive defenses that we may have. Obviously, as I indicated earlier, we believe that there's a very viable latches defense. So um, I think as far as we can go would be um, certainly to encourage you um to clarify at least what you see the limits of your order being, and I think it's perfectly appropriate um to include a statement that it is not your intent that this order impact uh proceeding in a sister court to the extent one is filed. Um, the facts and circumstances that that you know, the long winding path that got us to where we are today, I think are relevant in a sister court. I'm just as facts and circumstances always are, and the parties can argue those and whatever inferences they draw. So and I I think that what I'm describing is probably the outer limit of what we can do to slash Ms. Carol's concern.
Thank you. So I, Ms. Carol, please.
Thank you, and I will try to stop belaboring this, but I do want to point out that, I mean, it's been raised multiple times by Mr. Banks and others that we've been delaying, excuse me, and that there is a viable defense of latches. And I think you've noticed that I pointedly avoided those conversations because the merits of the issue aren't before you. So um, I think also to clarify that your ruling is not on the merits and that it's procedural would be helpful.
And then how do we move forward, Ms. Carol? If you want to see this in writing before we commence or we're not you. Uh, let me let me rephrase that. DWR would like to see my ruling in writing before deciding whether or not to um, file a motion. And by that motion, I don't mean necessarily a full recusal motion, but a a it would essentially be a request for an opportunity to file a motion in the appropriate forum, whatever that is, some formal indication of a of your intent to move forward with a a recusal with respect to this proceeding. My understanding is you'd like to see a written ruling. Your request is to see a written ruling from me before you make that decision. And then the next line, the chain of that reasoning is we cannot recommence the hearing until um you have made a final decision on that point. So what is your proposal in terms of when we sent? I can get a written ruling out tomorrow. I may even be able to get it out before nine AM tomorrow, but that does not give DWR a lot of time to read it and digest it and have a make a decision. So what would what is your ask in terms of timing?
I'm pulling up our hearing calendar right now, just so I can.
Our next hearing day is is Monday, but then we have a break.
Until the fourteenth. So my proposal would be that we receive your hearing notice tomorrow and have the opportunity to read and digest it and have a deadline of Monday to file any motion or request, whatever the appropriate um format is. And then, as I said before, if we could expedite review and have the ruling on the papers, um, hopefully prior to the fourteenth, I'd like to try to resume the hearing on the fourteenth.
So a ruling on you, you're talking about a ruling on whatever you may, if you decide to file something?
Right.
I just want to, because now I'm confused. Is your is your thinking that here you're you're what you're thinking out in in process that you would fight, you could potentially file a motion? What would you be filing? I mean, if you file a motion for an opportunity to file a a motion for disqualification or recusal, your idea is that would be resolved before we reconvene the hearing?
Mm hmm. Yes, we'd resolve the motion for recusal prior to reconvening, which hopefully would be by the fourteenth. But if we don't, well, I guess this is the problem here is we want to keep things moving, so.
I guess, but I think DWR's position was I don't have jurisdiction, so it would require you to go to court, right? I mean, if assuming I if if I agreed with that. So realistically, I'm not sure that.
I guess that would be helpful to know is do you agree with us that you don't have jurisdiction? If you could put that in your ruling, that would expedite our process because we would know which forum to file a motion such a motion should we need to move forward. Um. If we don't file a new motion, I think we could resume on May fifth. So I think we have to get back to you with whether or not we're filing. And then I would say like if we do file that, we have to do it by that Monday morning.
Right. So we would take the hearing day tomorrow off calendar and tentatively intend for nine AM on Monday. But if you file a motion, that would also come off calendar.
Right, and we will provide notice tomorrow evening if we are planning to file the motion so that people can not make travel plans or block calendars for that Monday.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Banks.
Just to be.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Carol.
I was gonna say, just to be clear, we didn't address your authority in our briefing. Um, we didn't make a determination as to whether you did or did not. We we left that off the table since we didn't think there was a question before you. So um, others have.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, that's important. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Banks.
Oh, thank you. Um. I I think this is going to, if it is to be filed before you, uh, Hearing Officer, it's going to have to be a staged proceeding, um, because there is a very real jurisdictional issue. And I think that should be resolved before we get to the merits. I will observe um that in predecessor successor counsel recusal motions, obviously, the primary consideration is whether or not the predecessor matter and the current matter are substantially related. And what that means is, do they share common material facts? And in other words, substantially related um. common material facts? And in other words, substantially related um vis a vis material facts, not, for example, tangentially related. And that is, um, that involves a lot of declarations and a lot of analysis, and I, I don't, I appreciate that Ms. Carol would like to get through this as expeditiously as possible in furtherance of her goal and the departments of, you know, continuing this hearing, but I don't think it's possible to do it on uh, anything other than an orderly calendared basis. And uh, that would put um, both my firm and the SOMAC firm firmly behind the eight ball because, you know, we can't oppose until we get DWR's papers, DWR has known about this issue by their own admission now for at least three weeks, if not longer. And um, so anyway, we would object to hearing any sort of recusal motion on expedited basis, and I, I in candor, I've, I've never done that in the past on anything other than normal law and motion calendaring. Obviously, if the motion is filed in Superior Court, then we're going to be dealing with the assigned judge's calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Banks, and I, I appreciate that, and I, I, I think that uh, I suspect very strongly that you are correct about the appropriateness of a, of a, of a timeline, especially having dealt with this kind of thing before, but also just for your knowledge, and you may have others may have conveyed this to you, I certainly have no desire to be in the middle of this, although if um I would have to consider more the, the scope of the AHO's authority and therefore obligation to hear such a motion, um, but it's um I'm a water rights attorney. I love being a water rights attorney. And many of us are, yeah, are the, the same, but here we are. Um. So I, but I think we have, it sounds like we have a path forward, at least for tomorrow. I will commit to getting a ruling out as soon as possible, uh, tomorrow morning, uh, but as soon as possible for all of you to see. It sounds like we will receive some um indication from DWR about intent to file a motion. My understanding of the effect of such a motion with respect to the alleged conflict in this proceeding is that it would um take, I mean, uh, probably would just take everything on calendar, off calendar. I, I do think there would be a significant impact on our schedule um, unavoidably. And not because of best efforts, but just because this is a complicated issue and it's a very significant issue. And certainly if the AHO were handling it, we'd want to handle it correctly and appropriately and with care. And if a court is handling it, they're on their own schedule and they get to make their schedule. So that's where we would be, but I think for the next day we know, well, and the weekend possibly, we, we know where we are. Are there any other matters I should address before we break? And it looks like, yes, we'll start with Mr. Moore.
Uh, I was hesitant to raise anything else, but you, you did say at one point that, that uh, 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 we may need to uh, register our positions today. There uh, was something Ms. Carol referred to that I think conflated to very different subjects, and I just didn't want to leave it unmentioned. Um, uh, she indicated that she deliberately refrained from addressing the subject of delay because she didn't want to get into the substance of the conflict of interest issue. Those are two very different things. Uh, referring to the fact that the uh notice of intent was filed in August and significant time has passed is not the conflict itself. And so the, the AHO's ability to refer to that is a very different question than whether the AHO has jurisdiction to address some sort of notice motion that, that unlike what has been to this point, uh, 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 specifically raises the conflict is, i- issue. I just didn't, didn't want those two different subjects to get conflated.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Let me go to Ms. Desjardins first, and then I'll, I'll move back to you, Ms. Carol. Ms. Desjardins.
Thank you. Uh, I think it might have gotten cut out. We were trying to trim down our brief, um, but there was an argument in uh, the first draft of the brief about um the AHO having jurisdiction over procedural matters and that uh, courts normally make the kind of detailed factual determinations that are necessary for full recusal, but um, it, we did want to argue that um, the, considering the delay in raising this and uh, is within the scope of the AHO, we believe, you know, and, and the notice, and if you look at uh, the brief that we filed, we asked you to take notice of the um, August fourth filing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Desjardins. Uh, Ms. Carol.
Um, when, when we have more information in the next couple of days, if you are taking the hearing dates off calendar, could you also clarify what happens to various deadlines? Uh, we're waiting on uh, case in chief for the protestants and other matters. Want to make sure that we aren't going to be missing any of those in the interim if the dates are off, if the deadlines are also off.
Thank you, Ms. Carol. I, I believe that, and I would clarify that if we get to that point, I will be very clear. I, I, my instinct is yes, they would be that, and trying to think how far out, but ye- yes, that the hearing days are off, the associated deadlines would be off um, as well, but let me, I'll try to address that clearly when, if we get to that point.
Thank you.
Ms., Mr. Busher.
Just in terms of scheduling going forward, it sounds like we'll have the remainder of the ongoing panel um, on Monday and then start the, the next panel on the fourteenth. Or would you plan to, are there, are there available to start on Monday afternoon if that is where we end up?
Ms. Carol, maybe you could speak to that if we get that far.
Yes, we can make our panels available if that's how we're moving forward.
And Mr. Busher, would it be helpful to have a commitment that we wouldn't get past the summaries of direct? I, I know you're trying to make a plan for your weekend.
Um. So, yes, candidly, I think it's hard to imagine there'd be more than
Right.
a half an hour left, right? And um several of us will have more time than that. So, uh, yeah, it would be great if we could start the cross on the fourteenth, um. Or no, earlier than that. Um. And if the direct happens on Monday, that's fine. I have no objection to that.
All right, then I'll make that, that, at least that commitment. If we get to that point, we'll, we will complete cross-examination for panel two. We, if we have time, we would begin um summaries of direct testimony for panel three, and then we wouldn't proceed to cross um unless someone asks to go first. I mean, if there's someone who would like to go, and we have time, we can do that, but I, I suspect we won't have time. Um, but I will make that commitment, and then we would pick up on the fourteenth.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Thank you so much for your constructive participation, all of you. I will be working on this. You will be hearing from the AHO tomorrow as well as DWR. And we are adjourned until May fifth, Monday, May fifth. Thank you.
Thank you.